TV five comes back. Thank you.
Okay. All right. The next agenda item is item 5.2, special permit number 16021 for expanded home occupation to allow a venue for large gatherings on property generally located at 12 or 12400 West Denton Road. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application?
I see none. Tom?
Tom Chayka, planning staff. This is another application for an expanded home occupation similar to the one we just went through. This one is located at 126th and West Denton Road. Denton Road's on the south, 126th to the west. The site...
Jerry, I'm sorry, Tom.
I spaced off a minute. I did have a disclosure.
Ex parte.
Ex parte disclosure to make. So used to this.
What, you've been here for four hours?
I'm so used to, I'm so used to the rhythm. One of the neighbors did contact my office, talked to my partner about possible representation, but he has not called back and we do not represent him. And his, the information relayed to my law partner is the same as what he's already presented to the commission.
Thanks, Jenelle.
Thank you.
Sorry, Tom.
No problem. The site is approximately 22 acres. There are several other houses and acreages adjacent to this property. Kind of made a larger... Actually do this. Let's go up here. My little quick map here. Here's the Hillside Event Center, and as you can see, there's several other acreages adjacent to here. There's, off the map, there's, there's more on the west side of Southwest 126th Street. The site plan, the Smith's house is here. They have a gravel parking area here and an area for overflow parking that's on grass over here. The building does not show up on your aerial because the aerial was done prior to this building being built, but the building that holds the, where they have the events is located here. That barn, we call it the barn, is approximately from this corner 155 feet to the property line. There's also a concrete patio outside of the, the building and then a grass ceremony area. The outside area is approximately 83 feet away from the property line and the nearest house is approximately 700 feet from the outside area. The applicant is requesting several waivers. First one is, or four, four waivers. The first one is to have a gravel surface for the overflow parking. The second is to exceed the 15,000 square feet total for outside areas used for the home occupation. The total for the parking, the overflow parking and the ceremony area is approximately 40, 48,000 square feet. And then another waiver is to waive the condition that all outside areas be 200 feet away from the property line. The fourth waiver gets into the whole thing about employed persons. I think we're not even going there.
I think we're familiar with that one.
So, they, they, you know, are also holding events, large, large gatherings. The conditions in the staff report are similar to the Avalon conditions and I think I'll take any questions.
It looks like the condition three, though, no amplification. Is that correct? We don't have any amended?
I think the applicant's attorney is going to present some amended conditions.
Then I will hold my question.
Can I ask something before, or did you finish? Or you keep still going?
Yeah, I'm ready for questions.
Sorry. There, it says here on page 137, planning supports the waiver to the 200 feet separation, but not for the screening. My question is why? Why not the screening?
Maya, where are you? I'm sorry. 137, thank you.
Why are we not supporting the waiver to screening? Is that the question?
Yes.
Because we feel with this being closer, that screening should be required and there should be some type of screening along that east boundary to sort of buffer and, and screen the activity from the adjacent property.
I, I did notice a little bit about that one in the conditions of approval over on 140 in number three. It talks about waiving the 200 feet, but then it says also waiving the screening. So I think if you really want to keep the screening, you've got to cross that out on number three there. On page 140.
I have different page numbers.
So it's the third, conditions of approval waiver.
On page number eight of your staff report.
So I think the, the last part of that sentence needs to be crossed off.
The way number three reads now is that we agree to waive the screening.
And should, and all property lines is obviously, yes. You are correct. We're, we're not supporting the waiver to the screening.
Other questions for Tom? Guess that's it, thanks. Applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, or commission, Mark Hunsaker, appearing on behalf of Hillside Event Center, Tyler and Melissa Smith. The Smiths have lived out there for a fairly short time. They held two events last year and coincidentally, the same thing that brought their activity to the attention of the planning department and others was the application by one of the wedding parties for a special designated license. Since the time that they have known that they had an issue with the compliance with the county zoning regulations, they have done a lot to bring themselves into compliance. They have, they have addressed, they have met with and addressed concerns of the fire marshal, the health department, building and safety department, all within the last 30 to 60 days. They have received a plan of correction approved by the state fire marshal. They have built a lagoon to comply with the issues of sanitation on the property that were pointed out. They have obtained a certification from the state health department for a public water system. And they have worked with building and safety to bring down the occupancy load or occupancy permitted in the barn to a level below 300 people. And they've done that by agreeing to bolt down the tables and so forth in a position where the, the occupancy as measured by building and safety is less than 300. And so they are in the, they've also moved a number of trees on the property to, to bring them into compliance with the screening requirement. These people are, I, I think unfortunately caught in regulations that they weren't aware of. The barn, I think at one point was pointed out that was, it was built without a permit. It was built by the previous owners as an agricultural facility, didn't need a building permit when it was built. And so what they are doing today is, is bringing that barn up to essentially commercial occupancy levels and installing hardware on the doors and so forth to, to bring it into compliance for fire exiting. This is somewhat different, I think, from your previous application. We do have some proposals to, a series of amendments to the staff conditions that I think, again, have been agreed to mostly by the staff. With planning staff and with the building and safety and the law department when we talked about what this kind of a facility ought to be. All of the events and all of the potential sound that could be a disturbance is, takes place inside the barn. There are outdoor ceremonies. Do you need another? I haven't.
If you have another one, that would be great.
Thank you. Thank you.
You will note that we have not attempted to modify the condition with respect to no outside music or use of speakers or other forms of amplification. Occasionally, there are wedding ceremonies that take place outside, but the receptions always are inside. And we have, we've asked in these condition, these proposed conditions to raise the number of, of events that are not limited to 150 people because we are being asked to expend substantial dollars to increase the capacity of the sewer and water systems and to, and to produce a building that is capable of, of occupancy by 300 people. We think that a few more is justified, particularly when they're all going to be inside. And the larger events, we've asked to move up from 200 to 275 rather than 250. Again, the staff, I think, would say they'd like to stick with 100 and they'd like to stick with 250 on those numbers. And I've also asked for a little more leeway on the months when larger events can take place. We've asked for those, for those blackout months to be from November 30th through March or February 29 or 28, depending on the year, rather than from November 1st through the 1st of April. This will still blackout three months of the year and we would just simply say that, again, because we have all of these events taking place indoors, there is much less in the way of potential disturbance to surrounding property owners. And I think that it's fair to say that without the SDL issue coming up, we would probably have not had the, the issues that have come up here. Since the time that this application was filed, of course, notices have gone out and, and people have filed objections, but I think it is, it's clear to me at least that the, that the potential for disturbance of surrounding property on this application is substantially less than the previous one and, and that you should consider the two separately. And I'll just, I'll just pass these photographs around that are, that show where those, those trees that are shown are, have largely been moved to positions to screen. And they're not all the same, by the way. Not all those photos are the same.
Oh.
But the, but the trees have been moved to positions to screen the outdoor ceremony area and parking. I'm trying to answer any questions.
Sure.
May I?
Oh, sorry.
You, you, so you said you would like to increase the maximum to 275 and then you said staff would like to stick with 250, but I thi, I believe staff has recommended 200. So, so were you saying they've, they've?
Well, remember the last time, last time I told you they had agreed with me that it could go to 250?
Okay.
And so I'm assuming they haven't changed their mind in the last 10 minutes.
Okay.
It's possible, but I doubt.
So, but 250 is the number?
250 is the number that, that they were willing to agree to and I, I have simply asked to go a little higher than, than the previous application simply because this is a completely indoor facility.
Sure, and that's, that's my question. I'm a little confused. There's an, there's an outdoor area where they have the actual weddings, is that right? So there is a portion of this that's outdoor, but the intent is the reception is all inside the barn?
Anything that would involve amplified music, inside.
And so the, the bar, the food, everything like that, the dancing is all inside the barn?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so the only thing that's taking part outside is the wedding ceremony?
Correct.
Okay. And your clients live on the premises?
Yes, they do.
And you run the business?
They not only live there, they also have their own family and three foster children living with them.
And how far is it from this location to the nearest residence?
In terms of, I, I don't know the exact number of feet from, from this.
I think it's at 700.
I think that, there was a reference, I think, in the report of 700 feet.
Okay.
Kathy? Mr. Hunsaker, did you guys consider at all on your request on number two to maybe blackout Thanksgiving Day? I, I just was curious.
I had not considered that, but I would.
It, it seems like, you know, if I were having Thanksgiving dinner, I might not want a wedding across the street or, I mean, I could see, I, I might be more sensitive on that particular date than on other dates, but.
I, I would certainly agree to that. I doubt whether there'd be very many people asking for that date.
One would think, but, you know.
Another question, I mean, obviously we've had several neighbor complaints and events that have been ongoing there. So can you just address a little bit about the concerns of the neighbors about the noise, the lights, the music? How is that happening if everything is taking place indoors?
Well, with respect to the lights, I mean, I, I think everybody, anybody who's driven through the county or flown into Lincoln knows that virtually every farmstead has security lights that burn 24 hours a day. There were a couple of LED lights that were mounted on, on the barn that, that were, I think, part of a, a series of pictures that were sent to you that had, showed some glare from, from across the road. Those lights have been disconnected. They are no longer operable. There are other lights that, that provide some lighting, you know, near the doorways and, and to, and, and the, in the, in the yard, but in terms of those lights that specifically were pictured that, that, that showed some glare, those, those have been disconnected. With respect to the noise, we do have some, we do have some video, I think, that will, that will demonstrate again that the noise level here is extremely low. And if you want to see that now, I can show you, otherwise I can show you when I come back.
Why don't we see it now?
Go ahead.
Want to see it now? Okay.
Can you maybe hit this, this white box at the top that expands it?
The what?
The white box at the top? No, the other one.
Listen to the sound of feet walking through the grass. When she gets to the gravel, you'll hear feet walking through the gravel. You're beginning to pick up a little bit of sound from, from the barn. I think that pretty well demonstrates the, the level to which the sound is contained within the barn. I, I don't think that there's, there's any sort of noise disturbance anywhere near the property line. That, that video was taken walking from just behind the house out to the barn, which is probably a couple hundred feet away.
How is, when you do have an event that serves alcohol, how is that handled? Do you guys monitor it? Is that up to the alcohol server that's hired?
It's, it's one or the other. I mean, there can be a, a host bar, can be just a, somebody brings their own and, and hands it out, or they can have, they can have a caterer bring it out and serve it, which is the way it's been done recently. We cannot, without a special designated license, sell any alcohol and we've pretty much decided from here on, we're not, we're not doing that, at least not unless we have the permit in place. There have been, this year, five events. There are some others scheduled, but for the rest of the year, at least at this point, there's only one large event with a reception. The rest of them are either just weddings with no reception or they are all within that smaller size.
I, I think, you know, a lot of the complaints that we were getting from the neighbors were the people, once they leave the barn, hanging out in the parking lot and then, you know, driving off and maybe disturbing the peace of the other residents in the area. Do you have any idea about how you could maybe control that behavior?
Well, my understanding, and you pitch in here if you, if you will, my understanding is that everyone is encouraged to use shuttle buses to get people there and back, which cuts down on not only the amount of parking, but also it's a safety matter. And so there are people, I mean, I think you've, you've been sent pictures of buses and that's what that is. That, that is responsible wedding hosts incurring the cost of having a bus to shuttle people back and forth rather than having everyone drive. Now, some people are going to drive anyway, but having the bus is a, is a, is a nice service and it's also a safety issue.
Ken?
Yeah, the alcohol that's either given by the caterer or by the wedding party, does it stay in the building?
My understanding is it does.
Or the patio area.
Is there someone that monitors so that people don't leave?
Licensed bartenders would because they license the bar, like the barn and the patio area. And then I monitor throughout the night. I'm not out there the whole entire night, but I go out there, once the dance starts at least every hour, checking the bathrooms, making sure that the party is under control, that there aren't people hanging out, being obnoxious outside. I mean, our house is right there. My kids go to bed at 8:30. I don't want people out rowdy in the parking lot either.
Do you allow them to bring their own and sit out in the parking lot? Because that could be pretty noisy.
No.
Can you show us on the map where the patio area is and also just address, are the doors between the patio area and the building left open at any point? I'm just thinking about noise and, you know, bringing alcohol outside and if people are excited and happy and being a little rowdy.
The garage door does get left open sometimes that's on, that goes out to the patio area. And when I took the, yeah, when I took that video, that door was open.
Okay.
So.
But you were coming at it from?
From the front.
From there? Okay.
Yeah, so from the, yeah, from our house.
Then the door's around the other side, is that right?
Yes.
There's a door in this corner, there's a door in the center, and then there's actually a door on the northwest corner and then a large garage door.
It's on that side? Sorry, that side means something to you, the?
Yeah.
I can't tell which way because we're backwards from each other, but, okay.
I did want to say, the first wedding we had out here this year, there were some people in the parking lot, but I have since posted signs and let everybody know that it is not allowed in the parking lot, no alcohol.
Other questions?
So what's the true occupancy of the barn now?
The fire marshal has it rated at like 430 something because the tables aren't mounted yet.
And once those are mounted, it will, the occupancy will be roughly about 290. And our architect will be submitting plans with that in place to building and safety.
Okay. On the conditions, it says, you know, number four, any outdoor event must conclude by 11 PM, but my concern is, are you considering if a reception is held in the barn, is that an indoor event or do you consider that an outdoor event?
I think that, I, I don't want to speak for Tom, but I'm, I'm, again, this is, this, this is an effort to amend the conditions of the staff report. And this, number four, was part of the staff report. My guess is that's a carryover because there was this kind of an effort to, to treat both of these applications similarly. We don't, I mean, if there's a, if there's an earlier time to terminate outdoor events that somebody would be happy with, I, I don't think there'd be any objection here because the outdoor events that occur here are largely just wedding ceremonies and those occur early and they're over early. And if there's a reception, the reception is in the barn.
But can the reception go later than 11 o'clock?
I suppose it could, but we would be willing to terminate it earlier than that, too.
So what if we just struck?
As a practical matter, they're all over by 11 o'clock anyway.
What if we, yes, just struck outdoor from condition four?
Sure. I think that works.
And can I just clarify, just because we've had enough discussion on this? So when we say the reception is indoor, does it spill over outside to the patio? So are noise, are people out there, is music out there?
Occasionally people out there smoking cigarettes, maybe having a drink out there and then probably go back in and dance.
And then if we have over 200 people, there's only seating for 200 inside. So if they have from 201 to 275, then there would be people outside sitting on the patio area.
Okay. Okay.
Eating, yeah, and probably progressively going inside.
Have no problem, like, making sure that the DJ's not putting any speakers outside. That's no problem, because I know that the video that was taken on May fourteenth, there was a larger group, and they did have some speakers outside. And so we have no problem.
You okay with that?
Yes.
And what, I just, I'm thinking about the open garage door, too. Would you be comfortable controlling if the music is going, the garage door doesn't open?
The only concern we have about that is we don't have heating and air conditioning.
So the breeze is nice together.
We do have ceiling fans and some floor fans. But if it would be possible to leave that open, it would be preferred, but we understand if it can't be.
Just for reference purposes, that patio area is on the north side of the barn.
Okay, just a minute.
Just a second, Mark, it's not up.
There we go.
In terms of proximity to neighboring homes, it's, I don't know what the distance is, but I think Tom said the closest was seven hundred feet, and they're out there quite a ways.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a couple here. Is the, I can't remember now, but I think there's, you've held one event that did have fireworks. Is that...
No, we did not.
I believe one person lit off one firework, but it was like just a random person that was there, and that was it. There was no like firework show or anything like that.
Okay. Have you held any meetings with the neighbors to discuss with them what their concerns are, or any compromises that you guys could come to?
I think the biggest issue is sound and lights.
So you haven't held any meetings with them?
We had a little pamphlet that we...
We invited them to an open house at our barn, and we had a few neighbors come.
Was that this year or last?
Yes, it was this year.
So when you purchased this property, because you haven't owned this property for too terribly long, did you buy it with the intent to hold events, or...
We knew with the barn that was there empty, that it was a possibility, and it was just making it work, yeah.
And we purchased it under our personal names, and then in December, we switched it over to our LLC.
Okay.
Anything else?
That for right now.
Okay. Anyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. Thanks for your time today. Actually, my wife just passed out some copies of the presentation that I will go through, so you can take some notes on that or use that however you...
You introduce yourself, give your address.
Yes, sorry about that. My name is Sean Fintel, and we live at twelve four oh one West Dent Road. It's just on the other side of twelve four hundred West Dent Road, where Hillside Events is at. And so I'm representing my wife Alexis and myself, and actually a few people that could not be here, so I would ask that if I could get fifteen extra minutes.
How about we go ten?
Okay. Okay, so first off, what I'd like to mention is that, so my wife, Flexi and I did move in in May of twenty fourteen, so we'd been there about two years. We actually just got married last January, and we actually thought about having our wedding out there last summer, but we decided to get in sat just so that we wouldn't disrupt the neighbors. That was actually just for one event, so we did that out of respect for the neighbors. And I come from the country, I've lived in the country all my life, and of course, that's one thing that you do like to have, is some peace and quiet when you are in the country. And of course, I look back at the nineteen seventy-nine zoning resolution of Lancaster County, Nebraska, and I won't read that through in its entirety, but the important things are the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the citizens. It goes on to conserve the value of the property and to encourage the most appropriate use of land. But what's more important is the amendment in two thousand and nine to allow small family-owned businesses to operate out of their homes. Now, business is supposed to be accessory to the residential use of the property and operated by the family occupying the residence. This condition makes it more likely that the business will be a good neighbor, and the key thing is that last sentence, where it says the business should not detract from the peace and enjoyment of the surrounding properties. And I think the text in this amendment really states very well how those rules are written, and how they should be respected, so that the neighbors do have peace and enjoyment of their property. What I would like to mention right now is there was a comment made about the fireworks and some random person that was there, and I think that's a very key point that was made by the applicant. That's a very big concern, because if that happened once, how is that to be controlled of future events? That also has relations to alcohol also, that we can talk about later on. That's a major problem, when you have random people that show up, which can happen. The applicant admitted to that. This is the operation summary, opposition summary to date that you'll see in front of you, and there actually have been a few more additions to this. So anything with a message icon, they've either signed the petition or expressed opposition through a letter that you've seen posted. So basically everywhere around Hillside Events, they have opposed. Any properties in red do not have houses. And I'll give this example of the property to the north, they don't live there, so in talking with that person that owns that property, he said, "Well, it should really be up to the people that live in the area to state their concerns," if they have their concerns about the applicant. So of course, there are quite a few concerns. But this summary says it all, as far as what we have experienced. And the applicant and their attorney have done, they've said some things about everything takes place inside the barn. Well, we still hear it. It's not insulated, or it's not insulated very well. We've got a video that shows that we can hear it from our house. They've had five events since April twenty-third. We've experienced issues with each of those. So you can see some of these pictures here. As far as people hanging out in the parking lot, we see this repeatedly. Lights shine directly into our house. Yes, I agree, the brighter lights are not there anymore, but there are still lights that shine directly into our house. We plan to have a family, and the baby room is right in line with that. And we could hear music in there, we can see the lights, and it is very disruptive. You can see the small driveway that I will reference later on. You can see the bus, there was one bus one time, and you can see all these people. So that argument as far as, well, we have a bus, so that not as many people have to be there, you can see how many cars are there. The other issue is, of course, the dust on Dent Road. It can't handle that. You've also seen the pictures before, I won't go into that, but just this last week, someone wanted to share their cake with us, and they threw it in our driveway. We also don't want to have to call the deputies all the time. This is a situation that happened on the fourteenth, where the deputies are called twice by multiple neighbors in the area because of disruptions. So Tom Chaka was quoted in the Lincoln Journal article from May first, who's saying, "The whole intent of home occupation is it's really not supposed to disturb the residential area and keep it residential in character. Residential is still to be the main use of the property." It's clear that this is not the main use of the property, and now they've changed it on the assessor's website to Hillside Events. This doesn't look like it's keeping the area residential in character. And the other issue is that they didn't talk about this ahead of time with their neighbors, and it probably would have gotten a little bit better as far as just talking back and forth at that point in time. A lot of reasons, and I'm not going to go into detail on all these, because you've seen quite a few of these, but there are a number of reasons why they shouldn't be approved. And one of these goes back to May second, where Tom Chaka sent a note to me, saying, "I wanted to let you know that the planning has turned down, or turned this over to Building and Safety Department to be treated as a violation of the zoning ordinance. Building and Safety is the enforcement agency, Planning, Building and Safety, and the County Attorney's Office have all advised owners to cease operation." You've probably all seen this. That didn't happen. So it goes back to the discussions that we've had before as far as regulations. Any regulations that are made, we've got to question whether or not they'll be followed, because this is a very good example of, it was just ignored, it wasn't even brought up during the applicant's testimony. So that's a huge issue, and a lot of issues with not following rules, and this is a significant issue, that proximity to the neighboring property of eighty-four feet, that's well under the two hundred feet requirement. And one of the neighbors will talk about that here in a little bit. A lot of waivers will have to be required, lack of sufficient screening. We'll talk about the staff report here in a little bit, but nothing was even mentioned about the south side, where there should be screening. There isn't adequate screening. There were trees moved in, but it doesn't follow that sixty percent guideline. Wildfires, that's a huge concern. That area is a high percentage of CRP and pasture. We've seen people smoking in that grass parking lot, that the waiver was asked to not have rock out there. When people extinguish their cigarettes in July and August when it's dry, that is a huge concern. So we're really worried about that, and we're worried about our safety and the safety of others. So this is the proximity, we've already talked about that, and the Wolves will talk about that here in a little bit. Safety concerns, we are concerned for the safety of our family, our pets, our horses. We have horses, we're going to have more horses, and that's what you want to live in the country for, not to hear music weekend after weekend that we've heard for five weekends in a row, and to see people intoxicated, urinating in the parking lot. We've seen that. And it's just not right. My wife is very concerned for her safety, and she might talk about that here in a little bit, but she's expressed that she doesn't even want to be alone there when I travel if there's an event going on. We just want to live peacefully, that's all we want. Unregulated consumption of alcohol, huge concern. I visited with Lonnie Conley with the State Patrol about that. He's got some significant concerns about that, when people bring in their own alcohol. And going back to this random person that was there, if those people drank, laws are being broken. It's as simple as that. If there's not a guest list to determine who is there and who shouldn't be there, and people drink that shouldn't be drinking, laws are being broken. Additional traffic, you can see that picture, you've probably all seen it before. Very big issue with crowd control, noise control, indecent and dangerous activity. Indecent is people urinating in the parking lot. And this, we see this repeatedly, people standing there, doing things they shouldn't be doing. And you may have seen this video that I've shared before, but we can clearly hear from the front of our house a conversation, this person that was using the F-word repeatedly. And when you can hear that from your house, that's a big concern. It's actually worse than living by bar, because at least at a bar, people are being monitored for how they're drinking, and we've seen situations with that. Light noise pollution, we won't go into that, but we've also got a letter that you've probably seen, that they can see these lights a mile away. So obviously, that problem is still there, and this letter was just posted yesterday. So this is our house directly on the other side of Hillside Events, so all the things that we can see, the music, the lights shine directly into our house. Property value concerns, of course, that goes without saying. That is a concern. People do hang out in the parking lot, when you've got two hundred, even two hundred and seventy-five people, there is no way to babysit all those people and make sure they're being good people. We've seen situations where that is the case. Wildfire concerns, a very big issue. I spoke with Fire Chief Jeff Ohm at Pleasantale Volunteer Fire Department. His concerns are if a fire breaks out, they can't respond to it. There's not a fire hydrant out there. They have to truck water from Pleasantale Fire Department. The other big issue is just accessibility into the property. We'll talk about that here in a little bit, but we've seen people smoking and putting out cigarettes in the grass. And that's why it is worse than living by bar, because at least at a bar, we don't have a whole bunch of grass that can start a lot of houses on fire and a lot of property and animals on fire. So evacuation, one small driveway, there's really no way for other people to evacuate or for emergency personnel to enter the property, other than this one small driveway. And you can see where it is. And I'm actually here also talking on behalf of Lou Anna and John Petchy, and she actually had, her father was killed in this driveway, because of a drunk driver, and that's why she's very, very emotional about this, and they did leave. Hundred to one hundred and fifty vehicles just isn't realistic, and that bus doesn't take care of the issues that we've talked about before. We've seen multiple situations where drivers have stopped on Dent Road and backed up, three to four vehicles that were parked on Dent Road trying to pull in, and when that dust is there, like you can see right here, it's just a reckless situation that could lead to an accident. Hillside Events, they're still advertising for having a tent out on the patio. There's a lot of things that they're advertising for an entire weekend for two thousand dollars. So the things about, "We're going to keep all the activity inside." If we haven't seen the regulations followed before, there's going to be a lot of room to maneuver with that. It's going to be very, very problematic.
If you could please wrap it up, please.
Okay. A couple of quick points. From the staff report, there was mention of, as far as the parking area and not having to gravel that, but who is watching out for wildfire concerns? That's not even taken into consideration in the staff report, and that's a huge issue that could affect a lot of people. There's also support for waiving that two hundred feet separation line, and that's going to affect a lot of people, and you'll hear from Renee Wolf here in a little bit to talk about that. How will this be handled when West Dent Road is being paved in July or August? That's a huge issue. And how will people even pull off of West Dent Road once it is paved safely? I don't think there are plans to have a turnoff lane there. The ceremony area, talking about this, there was nothing put in there as far as screening to the south. This, I'm glad I've got this picture, because they did move in some trees, that's not sixty percent. It's not sixty percent. And it was a good attempt to move some trees in, but we can still hear the people, we can still hear the music, we can still see the lights. It's an attempt to say, "Yep, check the box, we did it," and that's not acceptable. So I go back to this, did they comply with this? No. So why would other rules, regulations be followed? They've shown disregard for the concerns of the neighbors and of the county attorney in Building and Safety. And the statement as far as should have minimal impact on adjacent properties, I think we've shown some information on that, and other people will show that it does have a dramatic effect on the properties in the area. The other thing I would like to mention is that the letters actually didn't go out on time. Those are supposed to be at least ten days ahead of time, and you can see the postmark here of May sixteenth. So you can see how many people responded to this in a short period of time, a lot of opposition letters, but there would have even been more had that been sent out at the appropriate amount of time. I'd like to close with this, "The business should not detract from the peace and enjoyment of surrounding properties," and I think we've shown that unfortunately it does. We just ask you to please help us to stay safe and deny this permit. Really, the question is, are the risks worth the perceived rewards? And in summary, we've talked about a lot of this. I think the things that we've presented are reasonable, and we're just asking that the rules be followed, the rules as are written for the two thousand and nine amendment. So I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing...
I have a quick questions for you. I know you sat through the testimony on the last application. And again, so I'm going to ask you, is there, you know, with the special permit, we can put conditions on this facility? So are there any conditions at this facility that you would find acceptable if we were to adopt?
Very good question. If we didn't have some history established on what's occurred, I would probably answer that differently, but since we've got his...
And you don't.
Then I would be, I would have been open to it, but there is evidence that proves that if there's regulations put out there, they're not going to follow them, and it's unfortunate.
Anyone else?
If you had a blank slate, what would your top concerns be? If a new family were moving in and wanted to do this, what would the top things be that you would want conditions on? What would you like to see?
Very good question. The biggest thing would be what our future family will be exposed to. I don't want our children to see people urinating in a parking lot across the street. We don't want to hear them cussing and someone using the F-word over and over again, and that's going to continue to happen when people just show up. The applicant said that. The noise, it's a problem, because that building, it's a metal building. We've all been in metal buildings before. I'm not sure when that video was taken, but I've got some better video that shows it is very loud, and we can hear it from our house when that music's playing. Everyone can take video and say, "Yeah, it's really quiet." We know what can happen.
So if there was more screening of the parking lot from your property, so you couldn't see what was going on in the parking lot?
Unfortunately, I just don't think it's possible. I mean, you can move in forty feet trees, but the biggest issue set aside from that would be the people coming and going, and the wildfire concern is a really big issue. When you've got a hundred to one hundred and fifty vehicles there, and then there's really no safe way for emergency personnel to attend to that, it's a huge issue.
So you don't support the waiver of the gravel, groveling in the parking lot?
It's just one other thing, that a waiver is being asked for something, that there's so many waivers, it just makes it unrealistic.
Ken?
Yeah, what if they...
Yeah, what if they moved their driveway so that when people came in and out, they were at an angle? Or if that can happen? And if they had like an eight-foot privacy fence so, you know, they had to come through this way? Would that be something you would consider?
The only thing set aside from the things that we've talked about before with ignoring regulations that we've talked about and just having defiance for those, the thing that I had thought about before was why not have the driveway to the west? Where there isn't traffic off of West Dent Road and that would take care of that issue. But unfortunately, the things about mentioning, "Well, the lights are unplugged now." Based on past history, we're gonna see situations where, well, things aren't being enforced so we can do whatever we want. And that's happened already unfortunately, but that'd be my thought.
Any other questions? How long have you lived at your home?
Two years. Yeah, we actually moved in May of twenty fourteen.
You mentioned screening, the lack of screening to the south, what kind of screening would you like to see?
Well, what I mentioned was that the requirement was a sixty percent screen. And there was an attempt to screen, but actually in the staff report, there was really not even a mention of the property to the south. So I'm not sure why that was overlooked, it was just to the east. So the property to the south where that rule is written very well, that it should be screened from the streets and from adjoining properties, that south part was completely overlooked for some reason, so.
Are you saying that you would like to see a sixty percent screen to the south?
I think, like I mentioned before, I think that would help, but there's still gonna be the issues that I mentioned before and that's not gonna take care of the wildfire concerns that we're all concerned about in the area. The trespassing issues that another person will talk about, the people urinating in public. I mean, if they're gonna do it in one place, we just don't want to be exposed to that. And it's a sad situation.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Ken has to leave.
Good afternoon, or evening as the case may be. I'm Chet Bennett's, I live at one-two-one-two-one West Denton Road. It's the property basically directly to the southeast, I don't have-
Do you have your map?
No. I'll put something up on here. But I guess the thing that I came here, I originally wasn't gonna speak and you don't have a letter from me because I kinda have been observing quietly, I guess, the situation. And I have one point, Sean alluded to it about a trespassing issue. And that was the main thing I was gonna bring up, but I've never had the privilege, I guess, of being part of a process like this today. So this was kinda fun. And very enlightening, but it brought to light several observations that I guess I wanna pose some questions, some rhetorical and others that maybe we can get some answers from, either from Mr. Hunziker or the county attorney, either way. But this process seems interesting to me because in Mr. Hunziker's comments, both in this situation and the other, there was this illusion or suggestion anyway, that there's ways around this. Whether you approve this or not, we're gonna, there's gonna be ways that we can do it. And then by the commission's own discussions, in observing the commission's own discussions, there's really no way to enforce it anyway. So on one hand, I think we have very good objective opinions from Sean and even the previous thing that we heard with Avalon about all of these different things that are, and you voiced your concerns in opposition to those as well. But there's this thing of expectations versus accountability, right? So if we have these expectations and these rules and regulations, but there's no accountability, what is there? So that was one thing, I just wanted to make an observation, I guess more of a statement than anything. I don't know who would, what kind of recourse as citizens that we have. You all have backyards, just because ours are bigger than yours doesn't mean that, you know, rules don't apply and privacies and safety shouldn't be of concern. So that said, two things I wanna bring up, I don't know how to turn this thing on. I'll just put that there, 'cause I don't have anything prepared. One of the things that, one of the things that was brought up by Mrs. Smith here was that we never had intention really, it was just kind of an afterthought. This is from their website, I just pulled up and you can read it. Started with a vision, then we searched for a property and then we made it happen. And I would argue that hearing the gentleman talking about removing dirt down by Roca and then hearing the other gentleman talking about a bar, that if that guy just started removing dirt and then came to you and that guy just started serving and then came to you, there'd be ramifications for that. And yet it's interesting that none of that has, there is no ramifications despite a cease and desist, which wasn't there with the Avalon situation. Again, aside from that, I guess one of the things that Mr. Hunziker also mentioned was that there's no music, or Mrs. Smith even might have mentioned it, that there's no music outside of this metal building. And yet I would ask, and maybe they can answer when they get a chance to, is there not music as part of the ceremony? Because I know I've heard the ceremonies through amplified speakers. So that's an interesting statement that I would call to question, as with the statement that we didn't build this based on our property. And then the other one was, the other statement that was made was, "No alcohol leaves the building." And then moments later, Mr. Smith is talking about on the patio, how people are out there drinking and smoking. So we've seen many videos in both situations with different levels of sound from different parties. And I don't think anyone in this room is a certified audio technician. And as great as cell phones are, I assure you, there's probably better ways of recording sound. So I don't know that those are necessarily viable solutions in this. But the comment that Mr. Hunziker mentioned of, "There's much less noise since it's indoors." I would again ask that unless he's a certified audio person and is familiar with the refraction of sound, especially in colder conditions at night, which when a lot of this is taking place, Hillside Events is called Hillside Events because I don't have a topographical map, but it sits on the hill and everyone else is downhill from it. There's a saying about stuff rolling downhill, well, sound rolls downhill too, especially at night when the refraction of sound is different. I'm not a physicist, I'm not a certified audio, but having spent eight and a half years in the Marine Corps and working in nighttime in urban operations where sound is pretty critical, you learn that sound travels differently at night. Lastly, the comment that Mr. Hunziker made about potentially, the potential disturbance is substantially less in this situation versus the other. Unless he's been out there, and maybe he has in these times, I don't know how he can make that comment either. Here's my closing statement. And I don't love talking about it, but part of the reason, everyone's talked about why they've moved to the country. It's a standard of life. Even Mr. Weber, who had to leave, mentioned that he moved to the country for that same standard of life. I'll tell you about mine. So I spent eight and a half years in the Marine Corps, combat deployments in two thousand and four, two thousand and five. Was medically discharged in two thousand and seven for various reasons. I moved to the country because I deal with hyper-vigilism. I'm hyper-vigilant. My wife can attest, she won't get up here, I promise, because she won't be able to. Love you babe. But I would search the house, I would go, and when we lived in the city, I'd have to check locks multiple times during the night. Every little sound, every little disturbance caused me to be on edge. And it was not healthy for me, it wasn't healthy for my marriage, it wasn't healthy for my kids. So we moved out of the country, out into the country to create a standard of living that was acceptable for my family, but also acceptable for what I now have to live with. And I deal with it in the way I deal with it. To have on May fourteenth, the event at approximately twenty-two-thirty, ten-thirty, to hear noises outside and wonder, "That's really close, that's not just the party like it normally is." And to go out and hear and see a vehicle down, halfway down my quarter-mile drive and hear people that are clearly intoxicated, maybe they weren't part of the event, maybe they were, I don't know. Never had it happen before, that are clearly intoxicated, trying to switch drivers and then leave my property again. Not acceptable, not acceptable. So again, we can talk about this from, should we approve it, should we not? I guess the non-rhetorical question maybe for the county attorney would be, what is the recourse? I mean, whether you guys approve it or not, that's not acceptable. And Sean mentions it, that we might as well live next to a bar because free alcohol, not charging for alcohol and providing a bus. I've been to parties where alcohol is free and you didn't have to drive. And I promise you, the decisions I made back then were not as good as what they would have been had I had to pay for the alcohol and I drove myself. So that is not an argument for why this is a good thing, that we're busing people out and not charging them for drinks. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You said you lived to the southeast?
Yes.
So maybe like one acreage over from the Fintels?
Yes, this can turn back on.
It might magically.
Or Amy might do it.
Or through technology.
Okay, so we live right here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item?
My name's Mary Jane Hancock, we live at fifty-five oh-four southwest one-twenty-sixth. Our property is the northmost property on that map that was notified by the zoning commission. Without driving by and hearing the things that were happening, but we've noticed within the past month or two, some disturbances where we live. We live off southwest one-twenty-sixth, we live, our drive is approximately a quarter to a third of a mile long. We had portions of it paved, we had most of the drive paved because it goes down and through a gully and then up over a hill. And we're having a lot of problems with washouts, et cetera, so we put in the money to pave it. Since the events have been held frequently, we have been having cars come into our property. So we are a mile and a half north of the event center. You have to come through woods and over a creek. And we've been having, like my husband said, just last week, we had a panel van come in. Came in, slowly drove around our circle drive in our house and left. Now, we've lived out there a long time and we're long-term residents. And sometimes, usually people turn around long before they get to us because our drive is so long. But typically someone will stop, they'll ask directions, they've lost their dog, something. But not repeated incidents of people coming in. And this is before we're looking at ramping up the center and before any possible issues with the pavement of West Denton Road. We're extremely concerned that when the paving is occurring, all of the traffic will go down southwest one-hundred-and-twenty-sixth. If you're familiar with the area at all, you'll know that there are basically two ways to get to this event center. One would be to go south to Warlock and out West Denton Road. The other would be to come out Van Doran to southwest one-hundred-and-twenty-sixth. Southwest one-hundred-and-twenty-sixth is a gravel road. It's very narrow in spots. I drive it every day, I watch for cars, I slow down at the hills and go over. There are a couple places where there are large, significant drop-offs. And I'm concerned about my safety driving home. The safety issues that I have are the roads are very narrow. I'm extremely concerned about unregulated alcohol, and unregulated free alcohol that close to us on county roads. People seem to think when they get into county, there are no rules. You can drink, you can throw beer cans, you can pull in and make out or whatever you wanna do. It's still our home and our place. Prairie fires, at a minimum, I'm absolutely opposed to waiving the gravel parking lot. If you, we have had several years of drought recently. We have, we do do controlled burning out there, a few years ago, one that we were there helping attend, got out of control and rapidly burned three and a half acres of thirty-year-old trees and was heading close to our house. We had two fire departments and everyone working on the burn, putting out that fire. I think in conclusion, my feeling is this is a way overextension of the extended home occupancy concept. I see this as a large commercial concern that's trying to take advantage of that new rule or regulation. This is an owner-run business, I've been here all day. But they are renting out their property for other people to bring in caterers, people, whatever they want. They're renting out, you can bring in your own alcohol, you can have a caterer, there's no checks at the door. Random people are showing up. We've seen fireworks a few times, we don't know if it's from there, but we rarely see them. Somehow two hundred and fifty people coming in regularly on the weekend or by the bus load is beyond an extended occupancy business in our view. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Michael?
I have a quick question, because you live a mile and a half-
Yes.
-of the road. I need some help understanding how you connect the incident of someone coming into your drive and circling and leaving with it, is it just a guess?
We've lived there a long time. And we rarely have anyone coming in. And this has only been in the last short time, so that's why-
How many times has it happened?
Three to four within the last month, that's why we're connecting it. We've already made the-
Typically on the weekend?
Yeah, towards the end of the week or the weekend. We haven't, we've made arrangements to try to put in a gate so that we can close access to our house.
Thank you.
Do you have anything posted like private property or private driveway?
It says no hunting, it's just got a mailbox, it'll be going up. Everything around, all of our, everything around us says, "No hunting, no trespassing."
Have you noticed any other impact from the ongoing operation?
No, we haven't yet.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item?
Hi, my name is Renee Wolf. This is-
Could you give us your, could you give us your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, seventeen hundred West Mulberry Street in Lincoln.
The address we're talking about is one-two-three-zero-zero, West Denton Road.
Yep. And then Zach Kelp and Courtney Wolf, my daughter, they live with me at seventeen hundred West Mulberry Street. And Don Kirchhoff is the current owner of the property that's adjacent to this. And he had to leave, he was here for briefly, for a moment, he had to leave because of the- Well, his aunt had a funeral today in which he was there. And he stayed for a while, but then he just had to leave because it was too long. But-
Are you here on his behalf, or he was here and he had to leave?
No, he was here. He was here and I'll kinda explain things to you, but how does this go?
Yep, just put it down.
So are you testifying for him or for yourself? We did, I met him yesterday, so I'm testifying for him, what he also talked to me about. And also, we verified points of the property where we did stand at. I took pictures of boundary lines and where we stood at. And also, so he definitely, I'm testifying for what I was with him and what we discussed. Okay. So this is the entrance, first of all, to, this would be our entrance. And the- So you own a property out there as well, am I understanding that right? Yes, let me just show you. But no, I don't own a property yet. Okay, for instance, this here map, I'm gonna need a smaller one.
She's actually in the process of purchasing Don's place, he is moving.
Okay.
She is purchasing it, this is what we're coming into with-
Okay, thank you Zach.
What we're having to deal with.
We need to zoom out on that.
I think you can just zoom out on there and it may be able to-
Just hit zoom out.
No, 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 no. The button.
There's a button there.
Tom will help you out, he's an old pro at that machine.
There you go.
Okay, so this is the property in question, that's where the red barn is. And then this would be the property adjacent to, and this is Don Kirchhoff who owns this, he is the seller. And I am the buyer. And so this is what we're kinda looking at. Now, as far as the lanes, both lanes is a concern. First of all, the, let's see. The email that was sent on May eighth stated our values, that we were looking for in a property, "Privacy secluded, peaceful, a large enough area for horses to graze and to train." On March twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, we viewed the property, it was just what we had been looking for. So we wrote an offer on that day. May seventh is when I first heard about the expanded occupational home permit. And this raises many concerns, privacy is the first concern. With a large crowd going to a rural location, it is feasible that some people would pull into our lane since they are so close together and the same side of the road. So I'll give you an idea of what-
Yeah, it'll come up.
Comes on in a minute.
There it is.
And?
It's showing now.
Oh, there's the other one. Okay, so that's their lane. This is our lane. Okay, so.
That house kind of in the distance is that, is that the Smith's house?
Yes, that would be. Saturday, May twenty-first, at four P M. in the afternoon, there was a small wedding outdoors. There were chairs to the far north where the ceremony was, tables set up to the north of the building and porta potties to the east along the building. Right before the wedding, we could tell the bride needed to go to the restroom and didn't want to use the porta potty, so she just lifted her dress and squatted along the side of the porta potty. This is what we will be seeing every weekend. It's a special bride. And I'm taking, I had a photo. So this is the ceremony going on, as you can see, in the tables and the porta potty. The bride was right here. We were on our property. And I'll reference this in another photograph, which deplex the previous owner who had horses there as well. This is his old electric fence, which Dawn was going to testify today, stating that this is his property. We are behind. This is how close we are in proximity. And.
If you can please wrap it up soon.
Oh, zoom in?
No, wrap, wrap up your testimony. You have five minutes and you're over that time right now.
Um, so as far as going. And as you can see, there is a large garage door that is open, definitely. And so there would be noise coming from that as well. And noise from bands and large groups, um, you know, all hours of the night, early morning. From our west boundary line, we took these pictures, one from the old, the electric fence knob, which was left. Okay. This is, um, a different one. This is the other boundary line that's to the west. So as you can see, this boundary line is over, is looking at their shed. And all their guests are going to be able to see what is about to come on this property, which is gonna be. But past that stake is now gonna be Peyton Arena. There we go, sorry.
Can you zoom out or? It's, it's okay.
It's just fine.
So there's the arena, there's the horse barn. We are gonna be probably a hundred and fifty-five feet there. These are gonna be six dry holding pens with six horses in them. And as far as, this is a training, training arena. This is pasture, this is all pasture here, which is gonna be so close to, you know, their ceremonies. Um, and of course pasture. So.
I'd ask you to wrap up, please.
As a realtor for almost twenty years, this would make the property less desirable and would decrease in value. We would not be able to use the land as we would have wanted to. This is a public vent, event, and, you know, there's thirty halls in Lincoln to hold places like this where there are rules in place for alcohol governed and enforced. Parking and streets are well-let. Proper septic and water are in place. Livestock is not permitted in towns or cities, only out in the country. So why should public events be held in rural areas that could endanger our livestock and horses? June third was a closing per contract, but after witnessing Saturday night's events in afternoon, I now delay closing until I, uh, know what is going on with this permit. I strongly oppose to the expansion home permit for hillside events, even in a limited fashion. I urge you, please, to consider what negative impact this will have on us and other neighbors. Quiet enjoyment of the land is our right as landowners.
Thank you.
Also, I have another. This is what, this is the arena area where that is to be. And I took another picture. This is the arena looking at the barn. And also, this is where I took the picture. And I showed Dawn. Dawn said we were well within the boundary lines. And, um, he was gonna testify that, to that today. And if you would like these pictures, I can certainly give them to you so you can take a look at it.
Give them to Jerry, please.
Okay. Sorry, for the record. I'm sorry. Can I keep them for the record? Oh, yes, you sure can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mm-hmm, thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item?
I'm Jody Rapp. I live at fifty-three thirty-three southwest one hundred and twenty-sixth street. And we are across the road from the Hancock's. Um, we, um, our concerns, uh, first of all, this is an agricultural area. This land that we permit, that we live on has been in my husband's family since eighteen eighty-six. And it is, you know, I mean, people have, um, you know, livestock herds and it is a quiet place. And our concerns are, have to do again with the alcohol and the traffic. I think those are two major things that, um, that need to be addressed. And, um, there are, you know, other facilities if people want to have receptions. You know, Denton has reception hall, a reception hall. Pleasant Dale has a reception hall. The Playmore Ballroom is nearby. There are places out in the country, uh, you know, that you can have a reception and not disturb other people around you. And we've driven by, you can hear the music. I mean, it's a, it's an uninsulated shed. We're fortunate that we don't live right across the road from it, but we will experience a lot of extra traffic. And as Mary Jane said, the road southwest one hundred and twenty-sixth is exte-, extremely narrow and steep and hilly. And I have experienced, you know, drivers recently, within the past weeks, that are not driving properly. They're at the top of the hill, in the middle of the road, with me having to swerve over to the side. And as, when West Denton Road is becoming paved, I don't know how they're gonna get out there except to go through southwest one hundred and twenty-sixth, which would be the closest, closest intersection to that property. And so we will experience a lot of that. Um, there are steep drop-offs, uh, going down to a creek area. An inexperienced driver, two cars meeting on the road, could easily be pulled off to the side and roll their car. So I just would like you to consider, you know, some of these issues, you know, in, in addition, as, as one of the other speakers said, when you have free alcohol at an event, it is, it is out of control. We've had children get married recently and we limited the amount of alcohol that we would purchase for the wedding, for the wedding guests because of the amount of, you know, that we were concerned about, you know, drunk driving. And if you are giving free alcohol all night long, you are not gonna have any of those limits. So I'd like you to, you know, decline this in its entirety for those reasons. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have questions? No.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Jack Wolfe and I am appearing on behalf of Linda Wolfe, who happens to be my wife. And, um, she has advised me that this appearance is going to be pro bono, so my comments will be very, very brief. I have already provided a letter to the commission members and it outlined, uh, some of the concerns that, that we have. Uh, Linda owns ground that is just to the east of the subject, commercial development that's going in there on the corner. I call it a commercial development because it, it talks about a hundred cars, a hundred-plus cars. They want parking for a hundred and, hundred-plus cars. They've got a wastewater system in place tied to a well. They're going to have caterers and bartenders and it's gonna be a commercial development. I think the staff has done a, a good job of trying to fit this particular business into the home occupation or home occupation extended. It doesn't fit. They've tried to add conditions that, that might make it work. But you can read it just like I've read it. It, this is not a home occupation and it's not a home occupation as extended. And so my request of you is to consider this as being outside the scope of home occupation and really not appropriate for approval.
Thank you.
I, I have a couple of questions for you, Jack, if you don't mind. Um, you've been here several hours, um, too. As you know, um, one of the things we considered on the last time was whether we should approve the special permit 'cause that way we can put conditions on the business. Are there any conditions that you feel would be acceptable for placing on this business if that is the route we decided to go?
You know, we received our letter on Friday, so I haven't had a lot of time to, to deal with it. I do know that I would object to, to Mark's most recent amendment proposal. Whether or not you could craft conditions that would make this special permit acceptable and operable, I can't answer the question. But I think that if you try to start putting together conditions on the use, when, when the, when the use really doesn't fit within the definition, you're really gonna struggle to come up with conditions that cover all of the concerns that the neighbors have. We do not live out there. This is not something that, we use the property as a sanctuary. We go out there, we've got a picnic table out there, we've got a fire pit out there. We get out there, we watch the wildlife out there. We enjoy it in that fashion. But you have heard a lot of testimony today about concerns that the people who do live out there have for this kind of commercial development.
That was a very lawyerly answer.
Anyone else? Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Okay, staff questions? Does anybody have any staff questions? Yes, we do. Maya, please.
Um, I have a few. Um, first of all, related to this handout that we got from the, um, Flint tells? Or Flint, okay. First of all, this is, uh, an incredible presentation you put together here, so I, I, I'm very impressed. Um, there are a, a few things in there that I wanted to ask you about, Tom. So there's, there are no agency notes attached to this application. And we have a reference here to the fire chief expressing concerns about this application. Or has that made it to your department or?
I talked to him this morning
Okay.
on the phone. He said he, he had talked to Mr. Fintel and, but his official, he said he really wasn't opposed to it or in favor of it. I asked him, was it a fair statement to say that your official stance is neutral? And he said that was a fair statement. Um, I did ask him what the response time would be in, in emergency. And he said it can vary anywhere from five minutes to twenty minutes. It depends on the time of day, it depends on the day of the week. Um, surprising to me, he said actually the response times are quicker on the, on the weekends. I guess probably 'cause you don't have to get everybody leave their work site or wherever they are and go to the, uh, fire department, but, um.
Did you specifically happen to ask him about the gravel parking lot and the, the risk of brush fire with cigarettes? If he had an opinion on that?
I didn't.
Waiving that option?
I didn't specifically ask. It did come up in the conversation that, that, that it had been addressed to him as a concern, but he didn't.
He didn't give you an?
No.
Um, and I, I had one more, uh, question as it relates to this presentation. Is there an issue with the letter going out a day late?
A day, it was more than a day.
Was, it said ten days, right? It went out on the sixteenth. It must be the day it's postmarked.
I, um, I, I looked on the calendar and I think this is something that we've been dancing around a long time as a planning commission. And we need to maybe have a briefing or a thing on this because if you count, and I'm just counting business days, um, the letter should've went on the eleventh.
I don't think it's business days. I believe it's calendar days.
It is calendar days. Right, it's calendar days?
Yeah, so it's one day.
They go out on Friday.
I do know the zoning, um, the zoning sign is required to be posted eight days prior to the hearing. Um, I'm not sure about the mailings.
If it was ten days, that would've been the fifteenth and that would've been Sunday.
David Carey with the planning department. I think the, the question about the postmark, the postmark is not under our control. We put the, we, we follow our, our, our requirement to put it in the mail. The reality is that our mail goes to Omaha and comes back. Actual postmarking is out of our control. We, we, we put it in, it, it's not based on a postmark. Let's put it that way.
Actually, it's not out of your control 'cause if you had a meter, you could postmark it whatever you wanted. But, um, again, I will reiterate that we need to have a briefing on this and we need to talk about this because it's come up like three times in the last three months.
But planning's not concerned about the, the letter going out on the sixteen. It's.
The letter, the letter went out at, at the, the normal time that we put it in the mail.
Okay.
Just like we do, just.
Thirteen.
Just like we do in other, all of our applications. We, we follow that deadline. That is the deadline that we met for, for this application.
It doesn't say received, it says sent out. And you send it out within ten days.
Okay.
That's the letter of the law.
Um, then, um, lastly, we heard some references to amplified ceremonies for the, um, the outside, uh, part of the wedding. Would, uh, would it be appropriate to put that into the condition somehow? And perhaps saying no, any outside event is not allowed to use speakers versus music to cover, you know, whatever might be set, whatever sound might be put into those speakers?
Uh, you know, if the planning commission wants to add a condition that there's no amplified outside.
But you don't see any, do you see any value to adding that condition on the basis of the complaints we've heard from neighbors?
Um.
I mean, music should be music, right?
Well, I don't know what they're using the outside speakers for. Are they using it just, is the, um, the person performing the ceremony, is he has a mic and he's using it for, so people can hear better? Or, I mean, maybe you limit it to say no, no, um, outside music can be amplified.
But music is sometimes part of a wedding ceremony, so that's
Mm-hmm.
a problem.
That's true.
Other questions?
Is there any way to limit, um, the giving away of alcohol at these events? I mean, if, if somebody's gonna bring in a keg and give it away to their friends, is there any way to regulate that as a condition? That maybe they have to only use licensed alcohol vendors or?
Um, need direction from the attorney. I'm not sure we wanna go, go there.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think planning staff would want that as a condition.
Why not?
Just more, more regulation and, I mean, then, I mean, anybody can have.
Are you regulated?
You know, alcohol in your own home or?
But this isn't in their own home. This is for a special permit, so.
I mean, I suppose that we could put something like that in. I assume that, uh, Mr. Hunsaker and the applicants would object to that. Um, I don't know. Like Tom said, you really don't have, the county really doesn't have the power on its own to do that. Maybe as a condition, you could have something like that for certain size events.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Is health department still here?
No, they left. They left. I, I do need to address Mr. Hunsaker's amendments to the conditions.
Yeah, can you let us know what you think about this?
And his amendment on number one, staff want, is not agreeing to change that from 100 to 150. I want to keep that at 100. On number two, we would agree to go to 250 as a maximum. But the dates, we'd want those left as in the staff report. Number three, that's fine. Number four, we talked about striking outdoor. That's agreeable. Number seven, that was an oversight on my fault. I meant to add the south property line to that, and so I would like to add south property line.
Would you mind reading to, the condition number two as it would read with your blessing, so to speak?
What did you say, Maya? I didn't hear you.
I'm going to read.
Good reading, condition two, the way it would read in your opinion.
It would read exactly as in the staff report, except change 200 to 250. It's condition number two in the staff report.
But you said something about the dates?
The staff report.
And then the staff report has the dates.
Oh, oh, I see, I see, okay.
We want to leave the dates as April 1st through October 31st.
I get it now.
Anyone else?
My question for the health department, which maybe Tom can address, but now that the, the property owner has fixed the wastewater system, does the number of persons attending have an effect on that? Is that system big enough to handle this many people?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I haven't checked with health department to see if that has been approved. Health department would need to go back out and inspect and, and sign off on, on the system. I think the capacity issue is more from the state fire marshal. He's, he's the person that determines what the capacity of the building is.
Well, I have a question about that too because I'm, I'm a little confused as to how we can hold events with 250 people and supposedly if these tables are bolted down in the barn, we can't have more than somewhere around 200 in there. I mean, how are they, I mean, yes, I know they have this outside area, but how, what if it's raining? I mean, everyone's going to come inside. How do we, how is that enforced? That, that makes me leery about this 250.
Yeah, like, like we've talked about, all conditions, any condition, all conditions are enforced. Do you hope that the person abides by them? And if they're not, then we have to base that, you know, we can only rely on a, on a complaint basis.
Does knowing that the interior can only hold 200 people change staff's opinion as to modifying number two?
I'm not sure it can only hold 200 persons.
Yeah, it hasn't been nailed down. It hasn't been nailed down.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misheard, okay.
I'm also wondering with the, with the Kershaw, the Wolf property and the horses, would the right to farm rules apply to the horse? I don't know if it's a hobby or exactly what it is.
I'm not sure of your question. I mean, like.
Well, I mean, could the, could the Smiths, you know, maybe the horseman you are is stinking it up for their wedding ceremonies? Can the Smiths then come, you know, file a complaint against, against them?
Right to farm protects pre-existing farmsteads. So this would be a new farmstead apparently, so they probably could have some sort of action. But it would be a private action.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Applicant rebuttal.
I want to, I want to talk just a minute about occupancy. The building is being restricted to 200 in terms of seating capacity because we're bolting down the tables and the purpose for that is to reduce the occupancy of that building, the occupancy rating of that building to less than 300. It is now, it will have an occupancy rating of approximately 290. So there will be plenty of room for people to be in the building, there just won't be seats for everybody. So for that purpose, the lagoon that is installed has been professionally installed and inspected and is adequate for this purpose, which is one of the reasons we had requested a little higher number on the, on the larger events.
So the health department has been out, I mean, you say it's inspected.
All, all of the, I mean, there's been, I, I don't know whether the health department has been out there, but I assume that when the professional installer of the lagoon completed that installation, they asked for an inspection as would be routine. As I said before, there has been, we've got a letter from the health department, which I can give you if you like, which certifies that this, that their water system is a class five public water supply system. And there's a certificate that goes with that, if you'd like to see that.
Mark, I'm sorry, just to clarify, forgive me, it's been a long day. So does the lagoon mean the porta potties go away or?
Yes.
Okay.
They do. There are inside facilities and the, and the lagoon is adequate to, to handle it.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, and, and with respect to the, to the anticipated arena nearby, we're not worried about that. We don't think that's going to be a problem for us. And with respect to amplified sounds for the wedding ceremonies, yeah, there has apparently been a microphone for the minister and the couple to exchange vows and for him to be able to be heard by people who are sitting in that outdoor area. I suspect that soloists have probably sung a few, a few songs through those speakers. But that's not an issue that we're prepared to fall on our swords over if that's a, if that, if, if the sound of those, those prayers, those nuptials and those wedding songs is disturbing people, we can do that without amplification.
Anyone else?
I wanted to verify, so someone mentioned that you've had about five events so far this year, is that about accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. How would you feel about putting up some kind of privacy fence like along West Denton Road to help alleviate? I could see that alleviating a lot of things, some litter blowing around, help with the sound issue, satisfy the 60% screening.
Could, I'm sorry, I, I did intend to address screening.
Oh, sure.
We, we have never said that the trees that have been moved comply with a 60% screen as yet. There are other, there are more and larger trees that were intended to be moved in the fall when it's a better time to move those. But certainly, I think Tom will require, I, I've told my client that they should expect to have a nursery person go out, look at it, draw up a plan that complies with the design standards for screening. I mean, that's, that, that will be a requirement that, that the planning department would impose as they would with any other, and we're perfectly willing to do that. And I think when you see the size of the cedar trees that are already there, there, it won't take a lot more, but there will probably be some more that'll be required that will produce probably more than 60% screening from six, from zero to 10 feet. It'll probably, it'll look probably by the time they're finished with the trees, more like 100% from zero to six.
Did you have anything else?
Just one other thing, I think it's, there, there has been some reference to deputies being called to the site. They went out, I think primarily because of, of a request for a special designated license was originally filed and then withdrawn. And the reason it was withdrawn is because the wedding party decided to not charge for the, for the alcohol. They were concerned about the, the possibility that the SDL would be denied, and so they simply decided to host the bar. The deputies who went out were under a mistaken impression that there had to be an SDL regardless of whether there was any money changing hands. And I've had a conversation personally with Terry Wagner about that, and he acknowledged that they were making an erroneous interpretation, and he copied us on an email to the, to the deputies who went out and said, when there's no money changing hands, there's no permit, no, no license required. Now, with respect to that and the, and the concern over providing free alcohol, I mean, I don't, I don't know how many events I've been to at Lincoln Country Club or other venues like that where there's been a host bar following a wedding or some other event. I don't know that it would be really fair to treat this any differently. However, from the perspective of the operator, we're okay with telling people they have to charge. I mean, that's fine. I mean, it's not a big, it's not a big deal. It's something that people want to do for their guests. They might end up having a, a system where they have some tickets available to, to hand out to people during the event. I've seen that done as well. But to have, to have a cash bar is not a, is not a deal breaker here for, from our perspective.
Anything else? Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we're not allowed any more testimony.
I'm sorry, but the deputies were called on the 14th, a special designated license was on the 21st. Multiple people called the deputies.
That's, that's, I'm sorry. Yeah. I didn't entertain a motion.
Move denial.
Second, so we can discuss.
Discussion, Michael.
Same as before?
Give us a little more.
I think the concept of an event center does not fit with the expanded home occupancy for a variety of reasons. I'm on record as to what those reasons are. And based on that principle, I am inclined to deny this application as well.
Maya.
So where does it fit then?
I'm, I don't think it does.
But if it, if it doesn't fit anywhere?
We need to have a discussion about it. Not here, not with an application in front of us. We have to figure out where this fits into the county statutes and apply that. This is too big to be a home occupancy. It doesn't fit well into the expanded home occupancy, so it's not in compliance currently.
I, I agree that we need to have a, a discussion about it, but at the same time, I don't know if I think it's fair for, for small business owners to have to wait until we get around to having that conversation. So I'll, I'll sort of say ditto for the same reasons as before, I'm going to vote against denial and I would rather see this move forward as a permit with restrictions.
For me, this one's a closer call because the homeowners actually live there and run the event center, so I think it actually has a better chance of being a, a home occupation. Well, it is a home occupation if we deny the special permit, so there, they would still be able to do some events there because in, in this case, I feel like they're living there, they are the family running the event, and so I'm a little more concerned that, you know, we might want to place conditions on it. That said, I still don't think that this fits in within the expanded home occupation ordinance, and I'm going to try to be consistent today.
Tom, you have some?
I just wanted to clarify one thing Janelle said. They could not use this as a home occupation. Home occupation says you can only have 20, 20% of your residence buildings can be used as a home occupation. That building exceeds that, that 20% rule. And only one.
I'm more comfortable being consistent. Thank you.
Other discussion? Dennis? Oh. Kathy?
I, I agree with Janelle that I think this is a closer call. Having the music and stuff indoors, I, I have a higher comfort level with that. I am certainly sympathetic to the small business owners trying to make a go of this. However, as a small business owner, it is my responsibility to find out about the zonings and the business requirements before I start doing my business. And so I certainly believe that we need to have something in the statutes that addresses this, obviously. But I do also believe that this is, it does not fit this, and I am going to also vote for denial.
Others? Dennis?
I think it fits. I thought the last one fit. I think this one fits. I, as I said last time, I think it's, it stretches the envelope, but I think it fits. I think there's something else at play with, with all of these kind of circumstances, and that is a lack of trust between existing, not existing, but rural-based people who, who are, who are interested in a rural lifestyle, quiet, peaceful. And the, the idea or the opportunity for that to be broken to a certain extent with more of an urban event center, whatever you want to call it, opportunity or operation on a rural property. And that, that bothers me that there's a lack of trust. I would much prefer, as, as Maya said previously, that we could find a way where there's enough compromise that everybody could be happy with each other as a neighbor. But if that doesn't happen, then it becomes all or nothing for somebody and the other, the other, the other party as well. And that's too bad because I think that there are rights that both users type, both kinds of users want, want to have and have the right to have under current zoning and land use regulations that we have in place. So I, I think that's really unfortunate and it, it, it's been the case in both of these that we've looked at this afternoon. And I do agree with Michael, we need to figure this out. We meaning a city and county. And maybe that will give some clarity so that people can try to work together instead of just drawing the line in the sand and saying, it's all or nothing for me. So I am going to vote against the motion again, just because I think there's ways to work this out.
I am, Kathy kind of took the words out of my mouth. When you are a small business owner, part of, of doing that is you have to do your due diligence, and before you pick a location, you have to figure out what the rules and regulations are there first. I also agree with, you know, like what Janelle says, this one fits a lot closer. You guys actually live on the property. Unfortunately, the, the barn is much bigger than what is, the, the ruling is allowed, but I'm hoping that we can have a conversation, maybe draft up some rules for these kinds of situations, and then maybe then they can come back and, and start operating again. So I will, I will support the motion.
Thank you. I'm going to support the motion. I, I don't, like Michael, don't think this fits into the expanded home occupation. It's, the fact is, yes, these folks are small business owners, but there are locations where this type of business can be run successfully. You got to find, it may not be in the rural setting, so you got to find a place where you can get along with the, the folks that are there and, and hopefully that, that can come about. Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is a motion for denial on special permit 160.
Okay, this is a motion for denial on special permit 16021. Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Last?
Yes.
Shear?
No.
Ho?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to two.
I think we'll take another five-minute break.